I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The main standing for reflection. Thank you. We'll call.
Chrising?
Here.
Shipman?
Here.
Henry?
Here.
Ister?
Any audience comment on any agenda items? Chester Street update, Jim.
Traffic team is working pen document certifies that that's all finished. They'll do a walk through and it should be done.
Looks nice.
Which room is this? Marcus Street. They're finishing the north side. Should be done in the next two, three weeks. And they'll be finished up out of here, like I said, in a couple of weeks.
I haven't been up there for a while. Cold weather going to get into the concrete or all right?
No, we have all the curb two-thirds. The sidewalks poured. And there's an issue at the far end, there's a king wall with the address. And other than that, that's why we will be in. Jonesy, there's another issue.
Redevelopment Authority, Jim.
We had three auctions on Saturday, November 14th. The first was for 144 South Street, a sidewalk. It sold for $900 to a neighbor. And she plans for the storage shed and use it for parking in the back for the neighborhood. She will also be updating the sidewalk as part of the agreement. The second was for 1062 Miller Street. It sold for $650 also to a neighbor. He plans to put a fence up on the empty lot and install a garden. And then the third was for 116 South Fourth Street. That sold for $10,000. He's planning to rehab the property and hopefully sell it to new owners. The total for the redevelopment authority then was $11,550 for those auctions.
Got a question that the South Street and Miller Street property, those were CBPG funds and they got to go back into another?
That's correct. 144 South Street is the CBPG grant money. They will go back into the CBPG fund. And 1062 Miller Street is actually with the Easton Communities Grant Program. Same concept, but a different funding.
Okay. John, the finished business, you want to talk about the budget?
All right. We have a balanced budget. Actually, revenues exceed expenses by 24 cents. We will pass this on first reading tonight. We will have a, as far as I know, it will be December the 7th, Monday night, December the 7th. We will have a final budget workshop. We actually balanced this budget by taking expenses out of it. Some of which we may want to discuss about adding back in and so forth. Yeah, I think it's a doable budget the way it is, but council has not had a good chance to thrash through it and so forth. So I make a motion that we pass this budget on first reading with an excess of revenue over expenses of 24 cents and schedule a final budget meeting for Monday night, December the 7th.
What time for the Monday night meeting?
What time was your, what's your plan?
You're already better, 5:00, 5:00 on the day.
5:00? Okay.
Yes.
That's when we have the topic.
You'll be back by then, John?
Yep.
Ister?
Yes.
Chrising?
Yes.
Shipman?
Yes.
Reichner?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Tax levy ordinance, John?
Okay. The news is that there will be no tax increase. The general revenue will stay at 25 mils, recreation at 2 mils, the library at a quarter of a mil, debt reduction at 2 mils. So I will make a motion that we pass the tax levy ordinance for 2016 with no increase in taxes.
Chrising?
Yes.
Shipman?
Yes.
Reichner?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Ister?
New business, Jim? Child advocacy center parking?
Yes, the parking out, we had discussed this a month or so ago. The child advocacy centers coming in, they are rehabbing the building on Chestnut, which is owned by Cyclo establishment. I'm not sure how it was needed. And we were working with some parking stalls here for customers or clients and also parking for the employees over in the Chester Street side. Now I know you gentlemen just received this today. Only motion I'm going to be making is, and on the very last page is a page that the scale, first year, what the numbers are. And there's a 5% incline each year. I'm just going to make the motion that after everybody's reviewing it, I'll give David's authorization to sign it there. Are there any questions on? Go back to Mark. Okay, so we reviewed this evening and if there's any questions, we'll deal with them our ways and then have David sign them.
Is there no issue with upstairs parking?
No, no, we're not indoor parking.
Okay. So this is a total of 12 spots?
Yes, yes, yes. And in the back, you can see the numbers in the back, John. Like I said, there's a build-in 5% per year.
And there's six of them are actually parking permits for the?
For the employees. Six of them are across the street in the Chester Street lot. One we just repaid. Okay? There's a lot of language in here, Dyson required. And of course, we have to take it, we being the owners, full responsibility, plowing the park, furnishing the lights and so forth.
Mike did. He's been back and forth and?
Mike drew this off.
Yeah, yeah. So I have had one reviewer, but he's been more thoroughly discussing it.
There's any questions, I make that form of motion.
A second.
Matthew?
Shipman?
Yes.
Reichner?
Yes.
Henry?
Yeah.
Ister?
Yes.
Chrising?
Yes.
Stormwater waiver, Rick?
Mike, you have anything on that, that stormwater waiver?
Yep.
Because I thought I had something from John McGorvich.
Yeah, it's in your packets.
Yeah, I got something there from Kiefer.
It's all packed.
Yep.
But John McGorvich was another issue.
Okay.
Is this Merz?
Yeah.
What was the other one?
That was also for the subdivision that we're currently working on to have it completed.
Okay, all right.
For the first review. Basically, what we're here for tonight is, First Real Estate is looking to subdivide their area up at Packer and Star Avenue where the bowling alleys and car wash is. They like to subdivide that because the owner of the bowling alley has interest in buying the property it sits on. So Mr. Kiefer, or I should say, Mr. Hummer from Kiefer Associates is requesting a stormwater waiver for that subdivision because there's no plane construction or land disturbance on that site. It's just a basic, simple subdivision and nothing's going to change.
And it's basically the same thing that we've done a year or so ago with the Cyclo property?
That's correct, sir.
Okay. Then I'll make that motion that we approve the?
Subdivision.
Stormwater waiver.
There's a stormwater waiver on it.
Second.
Reichner?
Yes.
Henry?
Yeah.
Ister?
Yes.
Chrising?
Yes.
Shipman?
Yes.
First reading ordinance changes, Rick.
Mike?
Well, you gentlemen had come and asked us to review some ordinances due to some changes in our community. And Terry and I have sat down and worked since probably May in getting these ordinances in place, presenting folks. What we're looking at is, we've all got copies for review, is the definition on mobile home. Since mobile homes aren't considered mobile homes now, they're pre-manufactured, we thought we'd update that definition. And then the next would be mobile home parks.
Excuse me, Mike.
Yep.
I want to do this one at a time if we can. You can explain them all and then go back or how, how do we want to do that, Rick?
It don't matter to me. Do you want to explain them all or do it one at a time or however you want to do it?
I can, I can explain them all one at a time and?
Let's just do them one at a time. You've got the second one there, then the fresh one.
Okay.
We're just, do you have any time to study or?
I just have a couple of questions on your stuff instead of doing one at a time.
Does anybody have any questions on the first one?
Mobile home definitions. Basically, the reason for the change of the definition is because they're not considered mobile homes anymore. They're considered prefabricated housing is what it is.
Okay. We're just pretty much updating.
Pretty much updating the definition, yes, sir.
Want to make a motion, that's 175-4?
Cap, that's 175. I'll make that motion, we accept the change.
On the first reading?
On the first reading, yeah.
Need a second?
Henry?
Yeah.
Ister?
Yes.
Chrising?
Yes.
Shipman?
Yeah.
Reichner?
Okay, second would be mobile home parks. We're basically just adding some things to our current ordinance that we have in place. First of all, we updated the definition with that also. Basically, we're adding that to what our current ordinance is. We're adding that mobile home park area, mobile home park should have an area of at least 10 neighbors. And the next thing we're adding, the maximum height of a building shall be 15 feet for one story. And then we're adding that no more than 30% of any lot shall be covered by structure.
Any questions on that?
No, please help explain.
What ordinance number is that, please?
175-65?
I make that motion?
Ister?
Yes.
Chrising?
Yes.
Shipman?
Yes.
Reichner?
Yes.
Henry?
Good. Not to add any confusion, back to definitions, 175-4. We are adding some language to the supplementary, or the, excuse me, junkyard prohibited, which is basically a new ordinance that we're proposing. We took our current ordinance that had basically to do with rubbish and just updated it and added appliances, containers, campers, or parts of campers, trailers, or parts of trailers. Basically, why we're doing that is, this day and age, we're having a lot of people in different neighborhoods creating scrap yards. That's really bringing down the character of the neighborhood. And we really didn't have any teeth to go after these folks because it's not in the language. By putting this in the language, it gives us a little bit more enforcement to go after the folks to get their progress moved up. And then what we're adding to 175-70, use prohibited in all districts. We're adding C, which is a new part of the ordinance. It's called junkyards prohibited. Do I need to read the whole words?
Read, yeah.
Yes?
No.
Yep, okay. Number one, it says, "Any place or places, either public or private, were worn out, discarded, secondhand rubbish wood, building materials, plants, containers, or scrap metal such as iron, steel, or any material, racks, paper, automobiles, or parts of automobiles, campers or parts of campers, and trailers or parts of trailers, are stored or allowed to equally collect or stain." Number two, it says, "It should be unlawful for any person or persons, former corporation, to establish, maintain, conduct, or allow any junkyards, either on public, private property, within the limits of the City of Stoneriff, Pennsylvania." Number three, it is, "Cardports or tarts, or any other type of temporary coverage, do not constitute the proper covering or storage of materials or objects." And number four, "The establishment, maintenance, or conduct of any junkyard within the limits of the City of Stoneriff is hereby declared to be a public nuisance and liable to be evaded as provided by law. Any junkyards here, herefore established and now exist the main, common, and property, either private or public, within the limits of the City of Stoneriff, is hereby declared to be a nuisance and shall be removed by the owner, B.C., or proprietor of such premises."
All right, here's my question. I get more calls about this than anything else.
Okay.
And so you know I'm a big supporter of this.
Okay.
I just want to make sure that we have enough, in past years, every time I've, every time we got into complaints, it's always, you know, what constantly? There's two tires a junkyard, there's four tires and five old cars a junkyard, whatever it may be. Does this give you enough to go up to, you know, I mean, anybody can have an extra trash can in their backyard. But when you've got six piles of stuff covered with plastic or tarp or whatever it may be, a busted up camper sitting there, I don't care what you call that, that's a junkyard. So do you guys feel this is, is there enough in here? I mean, I think there is, but I'm asking you.
Yes, and Mr. Mayor, that's why we added number three to answer your first question. Cardports, or cardports or tarts, or any other type of temporary recovery, do not constitute the proper covering or storage of materials or objects. That's your question, answer to question number one? Yes?
Yes.
Okay. Your answer to question number two, if you look at number one, we added campers or parts of campers, trailers or parts of trailers. We already had parts of automobiles in our current rubbish ordinance. We just added those as language to this ordinance.
Okay.
So I feel, yes, we have enough teeth now in our ordinance to?
Hey, that's good.
Good.
Need a motion? Any other questions?
I had a question, if it's okay. Joe Bartelo, how would this affect, you know, current businesses in the city, like Mench's or, or, you know, some of the recycling places in town?
Well, Mench's could be affected probably because some of the stuff is on the city street. Legally, it's on Second Street. He has got one more Second Street, that's going to happen.
I mean, is this going to affect the city barn or any of the other places that look like that too or?
It wouldn't affect, it wouldn't affect the business. If you have, if you have license to be a junkyard or a license to whatever you would call a scrap yard or something.
Recycling.
Recycling, that wouldn't affect them.
So you already have people in mind that you're targeting with this or?
No, the only people I have in mind is when people call me.
Yeah. The one thing, the one thing that is a stimulus for this, we're going through the streets, the town, police department, we're finding cars that people are buying, stripping, selling parts off of them, and they're just laying there, set there. And we don't have, it's kind of a catch 22. If they were on the street, the police department could act on them. We didn't have the authority to act on them. Nothing in the ordinance gave the code office an authority to act on these things. That's some of the stuff.
Because there's a lot of places in town that have places like that, like Peters and a couple of garbage haulers in town.
Peters was cleaned up.
So?
Yeah, I mean, that was, that was cleaned up unless there's something else there. I haven't been up there for probably a month or so to look.
Okay.
The last time I was up there, that was clean.
May I ask a question, please?
Yes, ma'am.
Eugenia Russell, community activist. In the 175-70, will that cover the trailer that's been parked on the property there on Seventh Street that I had complained about before?
If it's licensed, if it's licensed and it's on private property?
No, where Dale's, where your trailer was?
Exactly, Mike Reiner's legally got the license.
Your trailer, your trailer was moved. So the trailer that's on that park? Excuse me?
My trailer's still there, my little black one. She told us the big one was part of the stuff.
And that doesn't have a license on it? And there's a property across the street from that that has several cars parked on it without licenses? And that's been there for a long time.
And that's why we're passing this tonight. If it's not licensed?
Well, I just want to know, when I start looking and complaining again, will that be covered under this 175-70?
I don't know what this thing looks like you're talking about. If it meets this, it's going to be effective.
And I get a little confused with the ordinances because whatever ordinance you pass, it doesn't seem to apply to everyone. So is there some language that could be put in these ordinances that say everyone is to adhere to this?
These are for everyone.
But you don't apply it all the time?
That's a cool, again, you have your opinion, these apply to everyone.
I make a motion?
I'm going to take you up on that.
If there's any, if less than one other question here on the table, I make a motion.
Who's that?
We accept this if we agree.
Well, she brought up a good point because I didn't think of that. She said, what about the fire company, everyone to drink? It would have to be rid of that?
Well, what about the school district with the trailers there?
Are they licensed? What are they?
You just said that it's an ordinance, it's for everyone.
They're tractor trailers and they're using them for storage.
Yeah, we've had that, oh my God, though, for 20 some years.
School district has three of them down there, right? You're using for storage? Right off the Penn Street, Raspberry Avenue there?
Yeah, yeah, a couple of builds like that.
I just want to know where we fit out of this program.
Well, maybe trailers isn't the right, Mike, I mean, I'm assuming, when you wrote this, you wrote this for campers and guys that are hauling around.
Carrying on trousers.
Jug piles, furniture and stuff in the back. Yeah.
But I'm sure that there's other places in town that have trailers.
Well, I'm sure Sladee, Sladee uses a lot of them, yeah, that's a business.
Well, actually, though, those containers, the ship containers you see everybody buying and setting for storage containers, that would be permitted. You're buying that as a, instead of buying a garage or a shed, you're buying a container for storage. And those trailers, I think, would fit under the same thing. It was bought for a storage.
We want you to put them inside a building. If you have, if you want to store, you want to put it inside a building.
Just like the school district, they acquired them, I'm not sure how they acquired them, but, you know, they're using it as a storage shed or building wherever you want to call it.
Yeah, because down near by us also, Sladee does have old trailers that are not licensed anymore, but they're using them for stuff.
I'm sure they have them, everybody has trucks. I'm sure Whitmer's has them, anybody has trucking probably has them, Silk Mill probably has them. Let me, do we have a first and second on this? What do we have on this?
This will be the first.
How about, can I suggest to you, Rick, of your department, just make that utility trailers?
Fine, and they'll bring it up for, at the next, at the next meeting.
Why don't you change it right now, we didn't vote on it yet.
Okay.
How about the containers? What's the intent of that word? Because I never thought about what Jim was talking about either.
Well, again, Jim sort of made me think on that one also. What we're looking at is barrels that are upright, that can collect water, that they store copper wires and scrap, little scrap pieces of metal. That's what we're looking at as containers. So maybe we need to change the wording?
Maybe call it drums?
Drums?
Because Kevin just brought up too, the fire department has one out, the fires group has a trailer that we use for, for a jantrum.
Yeah, we took here the trailer, the word, the containers, the word that we're hung up on now, so what?
I asked again, would the language, could the language be put in the ordinance that's going to say, with the exception of, so that you can say, fire department is an exception, police department?
We wanted to define it so there is no, there is no exceptions. Trailer, a tractor trailer is a tractor trailer. We're not talking that, it was never the intent of this. Where's the safety containers? You don't put the second sentence, number one there. The intent was not to go after, I mean, not many people are going to have tractor trailers parked in their backyards. So we were clearly asking to be utility trailers. So right now it reads, "Any place or places, either public or private property, were worn out, discarded, secondhand rubbish wood, building materials, appliances, drums, or scrap metal, iron, steel, material, rag, paper, etc., etc. Automobiles, campers, or parts of campers, and utility trailers, or parts of utility trailers, are stored." That's the change. And the very top, anywhere it says trailers, up there on the top, we have parts of trailers, that's all utility.
So in the city limits, you cannot park your trailer or your camper in your backyard? And that's on private property?
If it's licensed, you can.
In city limits?
You know, I mean, Mike can park a, my yard right now is licensed. Camper, camper.
It's not junk if it's licensed. Okay, so we're going to have that motion with the changes?
Make that motion?
So we limited the word trailer all, oh, yeah.
Now, utility, utility.
Okay, what do you want to call? A container then?
Drums.
No, a shipping container, which I mentioned earlier.
That's why they took the container out.
That's, that would be just like a tractor trailer. And this is only the first reading, so we can think about it, we just want to pass it tonight.
Don't they call them ponds?
No, that's another outfit.
Yeah.
Probably. I mean, as Mike said, we're talking about small things that people can just keep accusing.
Second.
Chrising?
Yes.
Shipman?
Yes.
Reichner?
Yes.
Henry?
Yeah.
Mike, how about 175-74?
175-74 pertains to parking lots, screening, and landscaping. And the reason for this update to this ordinance is, we're getting more and more lots within the city and they're not being maintained and becoming a negative to the neighborhoods. So we're looking at possibly do something that could improve the look of the neighborhoods with the lots. I know the redevelopment authority just said that any lot that they sell, they have to put a fence on, which is, which is a great idea.
Right.
You know, we're looking at some other lots. And one of the, one of my, one of my biggest was, and the one, and this is really mine, and the reason why that is, is Chester Street. Looking at Chester Street there, you know, we just did a beautiful update, upgrade to that street and we got this lot right out here that really just sitting there. Now, I know we can't do anything about that lot, but in the future, maybe we prevent that from happening, you know?
Well, this would be nice, but we have lots like own by the railroad, you know, we're never going to be able to do anything with it other than just keep sending this stuff and hopefully it's going to sell to us.
Right.
What lot are you talking about?
Chester Street. Right off of Third Street, right there beside the Chester Street then.
Can you repeat?
Where the fire was.
Yes.
Didn't somebody just put a fence up there or?
Yep, Mr. Heller just put a fence up there. He went through hard, we got all the approvals through hard to do that, and he did exactly what he was asking for.
Can you, can you repeat that? I'm not sure I understand. And I also must have missed something about, did you say every lot being sold by the redevelopment authority has to have a fence on it?
That's what was proposed by redevelopment, yes.
Yes.
Unless you're going to do something with it, if you're going to build an alley.
This is for empty lots, I would like.
That's a condition of sale, is it?
It is, it's a condition of sale that's put in for empty lots, as long as they remain undeveloped. They're to be seeded, have soil, and that's in, with a privacy fence on any, any space that faces a street and that is intended to make it not just, you know, holes in the neighborhood that they're maintained well and not just for outfits. And so far, we've had a lot of success and a lot of support with that, with the neighbors. So I guess my question would be, if there's a development plan for it, then you wouldn't necessarily?
Right.
Exactly. This is just if it remains an empty lot.
We're just looking at empty lots.
And what was the specific comment about Chestnut Street? With Chester Street property?
Well, first of all, it wasn't pointed at any, it wasn't pointed at any one in particular. I'm just saying, since they did the refurbish to Chester Street, they really beautified it, tried to make it look better, you know? And then we have this lot here that's really not being maintained for nothing, you know? To prevent that in the future, in another neighborhood, we're looking at doing some screening and landscaping for open lots.
There's actually four lots, there's not one, there's four lots.
Yeah.
So I got a question. The last sentence, in number two on this, "No interior area of a parking lot shall be without at least one shade tree." I don't understand.
Well, just put some greenery back, you know, into the area, add some oxygen to the atmosphere.
Then we have that shade tree.
That leaves some more green. Please.
I mean, I don't, I don't know what the rest of this.
Well, that's a good question. If someone buys it, they want to just have a parking and have a grass.
Well, we didn't vote on anything yet. You want to get rid of the, "No interior area of parking lot shall be?"
I, I, I'm interested.
So will this also include the demolition projects as well? When something's demolished and it's nothing but a lot?
When it's sold, absolutely. I mean, that's, that's, see, that's a development and that's a condition of sale, which the city doesn't have any input into that, that's a decision they made when they sell it up. any input into that, that's a decision made when they sell their property.
Yeah, but if somebody tears the house down, you go to the wrong side of the, they just want a big parking lot.
No, no, she was talking about the conditions of the?
Yeah, no, I think you're talking about a house, if somebody tears the house down.
No, I said like when you do demolition.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and I think that, the last, I know the South Street one and 1062, and I think it was even done with the Church Street one just supposed to have. But, but, yeah, I mean, that's, that's part of the agreement of sale that the redevelopment, they read them after sale.
Just to clarify, for 144 South Street, the fence requirement was taken out of that because the property owner is being required to replace the sidewalk along the front and the property is a very narrow property, the fence didn't make logical sense and, and for the expense of the property owner with the sidewalk. So that one was not required to have any fence, but it does have the requirement that it has to maintain topsoil and seeded and if it were ever to be developed, it could only be a single family home. It has the other language, but that was one exception based on the sidewalk requirement.
So will that also encompass, I haven't looked at it lately, but the Second Street property up close to Reagan?
I understand.
It's on the right?
I think that's going to be developed, my understanding is after that, that that's going to be developed.
Because that was sitting there for quite some time as a burnout and nothing was done.
Now, let me get one thing straight, we're talking about two different issues here. What you have, as far as this proposal, we're talking about parking lots, five cars or more, 12 cars or more, has nothing to do with redevelopment authority and the rules and regulations for demolition, et cetera.
And another thing to say, I think Mr. Heller is playing and using his section as a parking lot.
Alright. We have a motion on the parking lots, first reading?
I have a motion made in law.
Second?
Yeah.
That's less the change.
Shipman? Reichner?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Ister? Prising?
175-78, yes.
Come on, just stay standing.
Well, when they get to the session. Yes. 175-78. We don't have little floor areas. We did make some changes to actually two parts of this. The first part is 175-78. The change that we made to this current ordinance was, we proposed that that 900 square feet in central business district, that has dropped from 1,200 to 900, okay? And all the other square feet stays the same. Then in C, we added bedrooms, up to two bedrooms. Occupant shall be a minimum of 100 square feet for each additional occupant, or additional 50 square feet is required. Basically, what I'm saying is, the IRC, the code right now states, the bedroom should be 70 square feet minimum for one person. For two people, you throw the 70 square feet out, for two people, now you go 50 square feet per person. So if you have two people, it'll be 100 square feet, three people, it'll be 150 square feet, so on and so forth. And also, we're adding that bedrooms be required to have an accessible window of 5.7 square feet. There again, that is going off the code, building code. Everything else pretty much stays the same.